May I rise for the part of the Legion, please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Approval of the agenda. We have one change we need to add to start grant discussion. You want to add it? It's fifteen A, Tara? Everybody read the agenda? Any more additions, corrections? All those in favor? With the change? Public comment? Any public comment?
Thank you very much. Alright, just kind of-
Can you just state your name, please?
Randy Monalan. I'm gonna be the next commander for the Legion here in Powell, started next month. So I'll go ahead and introduce myself. Kind of coming in things late here. I understand there was a a possible issue with a fee that was supposed to have been paid in, I think, the end of April. It didn't happen on time. There was some misunderstanding there. It has been paid, and I understand it's an issue from the board tonight. So I just wanted to come to make sure if there's any questions, or-
We can certainly address that when we get to that agenda item, Randy.
Okay.
Alright, I don't want to address it in public comment, but we will address it when we get down to that.
Okay. That's why I was here.
Yep, perfect.
Thanks for being here.
Thank you. Thanks for introducing yourself. Well, I know.
I know.
He's not new to me, so that's okay. He's new to some people, and that's great. Okay. Any other public comment? Sorry.
After twenty-five years, I'm still new.
Yeah, not to me. No other public comment? Okay. Approval minute. April twenty-fourth. Select Board meeting.
Make a motion to approve.
I'll second that motion.
All those in favor? April twenty-eighth, Special Select Board meeting.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Second.
All those in favor? Warrants, counts payable, May second. Two thousand twenty-five, oops, I think you had the one in my totals on it. That's okay. It's the one we were using for notes. You can have it back. The counts payable, May second, twenty-one thousand six hundred and fifty-four dollars and forty-five cents.
So I'll move second.
Any questions? All those in favor? Counts payable, May ninth, twenty-six thousand six hundred and seventy-two dollars and seventy cents.
So I'll move second.
Any questions? All those in favor? Payroll, May second, twelve thousand two hundred and sixty-four dollars and fifty-nine cents.
So I'll move second.
That's okay. Any questions? All those in favor? Payroll, May ninth, eleven thousand two hundred and sixty-two dollars and seventy-seven cents.
So I'll move second.
Any questions? All those in favor? Okay, you can have that back. Correspondents?
We have none to me.
Okay. Updates from town officials?
I have one from Joel, and I think Hannah has something on the cell tower section manager there, but from the Highway Department, evening all, we finished the concrete work and most of the groundwork at the transfer station. It all came out well, I thought. I wanted to look at the water flow around it, and then we'll probably end up putting a swale around it next to the roadside. I wanted to thank the Highway Crew, wastewater crew, and of course, Tom and Paul for completing the job flawlessly. The Main Street Bridge is coming along really well. As well, they have the cribbing under the bridge either today or tomorrow. One side is already done with the concrete, and the other side should be poured next week, which means we will have another road, bridge closure, but we'll post that as soon as we know. I'm happy with the quality of work so far. I appreciate the patience of the people living inside of the bridge. It should be over soon. We are out ditching on Skippery Road currently and started full grading on the roads, and hopefully, when the rain stops, back to it next week. I am looking for a new job for the grants and aid money and apply for a grant for the brick work and to finish Maple Grove Road. We also plan on blacktopping the back parking lot at the town office and the emergency exit from the office complex. We should have the mower going in a couple weeks also. Thank you, Joel.
I attended the hearing for the cell tower on the twenty-eighth. They had a schedule that did not work for all the parties involved. So they're just revising the schedule. There was an evidentiary hearing, and the hearts requested that be withheld, so they're no longer going to do that. So they're just asking the town to sign off on the new schedule. I'm listed as the duly authorized agent, so I was saying just I could sign, and then you could verify my signature, just because I didn't feel comfortable signing it.
Okay. Do we have a problem with that?
Nope.
Perfect. Okay. You have a question?
I do, about correspondence. What about the Dean Road issue that we thought? Is that not correspondence?
I, we could read that, yeah.
Yeah.
They did, couldn't we say that they wanted it read?
Yeah, that's true.
I did, but I did let them know. I forwarded it to you all.
They did ask for literally, quote, help.
I just, I've been acting as the animal control officer, and since the nicer weather has come, people seem to be getting lax on leashing their animals. We've been having more incidences between animals and people and animals' animals. Just please, as a reminder, we do have an ordinance. We got it. We have a leash law. You've got to keep your animals on your own property as best as possible. And we're welcomed Bob Perry today, and he's taken over as the animal control officer. I will be finishing up the case that I've been working on, and but I welcome him, and I think he's gonna fit right in, and he believes in a neighborly policy also. So if you have an interaction with him, I'll hesitate to share, so we know how he's doing.
Okay, thanks, Jamie. Okay, so we received a complaint from Christian Dickinson on the eighth, did we get this today?
Seventh.
The seventh. The response was today, that's why it's showing this. I'm a resident of Dean Road in North Powell. I would like to make a complaint regarding a large gathering permit issued for the motorcycle race scheduled for June seventh and eighth. Starting the Friday before the race, there are cars, trucks, campers, dirt bikes, four-wheelers, side-by-sides, and other small, loud, and obnoxious vehicles racing up the road and at all hours of the night throughout the entire event, throughout all three days. The speed limit on that road is twenty-five to thirty miles per hour, yet motorists are driving well above that limit in excess of sixty miles per hour in some instances. I've had to call the State Police multiple times throughout the years for this race. It gets to the point that the residents of Dean Road have to put out signs asking people to slow the hell down. Not only is the traffic excessive for three straight days and at all hours of the day and night, the speed of individuals is dangerous. There are children and pets that are in danger of being run over by certain individuals that have zero respect for other people, their property, and their peace of mind. I don't know how these people keep being approved a permit of this rate for this race, but if you ask the people that live on Dean Road whether or not they approve, I would bet ninety-five percent of them would say no. The dangerous speeds and noise at two AM is completely unacceptable. I would ask that in order for a permit to be issued, that they would have to have twenty-four-hour police presence at the bottom of Dean Road both Friday and Saturday for the safety and sanity of those who live on the road and have to deal with this loud, drunken, and obnoxious event. I think having a police presence would deter not only the speeding, the speed being driven, but at all hours of the night as well. I'm not looking forward to another one of these races. Please help us.
Thank you. The reason I, thanks for reading that. I appreciate it. So, because I don't know about this race in the past, and me being me, I drove down Dean Road, and so at first I was confused, because I thought I thought what he was saying initially was the race was on Dean Road, and clearly, that's not it. So it looks like where the race is held is completely appropriate. It makes sense. But I get, like, on the road, and there are definitely signs from the neighbors on the road.
Those are there all the time.
Yeah, that are always there. No, but it sounds like they have an issue with speeding on the road. Like, I don't know. I don't live on that road, but so my question is, in the past, has there been a police presence at the beginning of the road, or if not, what about, like, for example, the Sheriff's Department, like, some of the cameras that are on poles? Like, that's often a deterrent, because I I mean, I get the complaint about if that's what's happening, people are speeding on the road at all hours. That could be dangerous and annoying. It's not a very wide road. On the other hand, it seems like the race is being held in an appropriate place. So I'm just curious how that's been dealt with before.
Was that Sheriff's presence?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, they do, they know about the race. They do tend to be in town.
Okay.
Do patrol the road.
And the event organizers are very clear with people. They do not let them drive in fast on the road. I think they really do make an effort, really, to say, like, respect the neighbors. Some people are not respectful, no matter what you try to say, unfortunately. And we have had one other complaint in the past.
I heard today, too, and I don't know, because it's a rumor, so I haven't heard from Paul, the race organizer. And he has another one this weekend, right?
Yep.
So I heard a rumor that people who are caught violating their rules and regulations, such as speeding up and down Dean Road, or Stromeyer Road, or somebody that's in there on an illegal side-by-side type thing or whatever, it's a one-strike. He doesn't have a three-strike. He doesn't have a three-strike thing. If you get caught, you are no longer welcome at his events. So I think he's trying to, the event organizer is really trying to buckle down on people who are violating his rules and regulations that he has in place for his races. That's a rumor. I mean, I haven't heard it from his mouth. I would love, you know, and I'm sure we will hear-
The proof will be in the pudding, because the first race is tomorrow, or this weekend.
So I'm sure that if Paul comes back next year for permits, I'm sure that'll be part of his presentation.
Okay.
Because he's pretty, he's really developed his presentations.
Right. Yeah, I'm not opposed to the road. I just want residents to know they are being heard, and I get it. That would be very unhappy as well.
Yeah, it's a lot of traffic for that little road, but it, on that weekend, it is, it is a lot of people. I can definitely understand the concern.
I mean, I think I've tried to swing by a couple times each day. I just put my eyes on, and I mean, I've not witnessed anybody film what they tried to be doing while I've been there, and my touch base with Paul. The other people.
You know, the one, the one my cousin puts on. Really? I mean, I don't, I really, they're, yeah, the motorcycles go by. A lot of motorcycles go by, but they're really not speeding down through, and they're they act, they act like responsible neighbors. More can I say? That's about it.
Thanks, Eric.
Yeah, thank you.
Tobacco, second class license applications and excess weight permits. I have one excess weight permit for Structural Wood Corporation. Joel's approved it, and they've sent their check. It's your pleasure.
I'll make a motion that we accept the permit.
They're out of, the roof trusses is what they do. They're out in New York.
Second that motion.
Any more discussion? All those in favor?
We have a third class, or first class and a third class for American Legion, Powell, Pope's ninety, Inc.
What's your pleasure?
Make the motion to approve. And so we do have a check. I'll add more with the discussion.
Do I have a second?
I'll second that.
Okay, any discussion?
We have a check for that?
Yeah. Yeah, he came in earlier.
Okay.
So I'm gonna be totally honest. I was gonna make a motion to deny because we didn't have the check because the protocol and the procedure hadn't been followed. So I just wanted to put that out there, you know, whole, whole since you did come through and per the state process, we can take and accept it, because we do have that.
I appreciate that. I was just made aware of it this afternoon. I don't take over as a commander till next month.
Right.
But, you know, trying to get feet on the ground, and I'll make sure that the next year, I think, your handle will be more family-based.
I researched it out a little bit myself, Randy.
Yeah, well, thank.
And those applications are sent out a hundred and fifty days
Right.
before they're due.
Right.
So it was, I think it was just an oversight, honestly. I think that as a board, we go on Julie's recommendation with this as well, because it goes through her, through the town clerk. But I also think as a board, we have to stay very consistent with the process. You know, we have a business encounter now. It doesn't have one, because we haven't received the check. So I think it's just a matter of consistency. It's not, it's not anything pointed at anybody. It's just staying, staying on the line. That's all.
Yeah, I, like I said, I just was made aware this afternoon, and I have all of the background on it.
Exactly.
I understand, you know. I think it's to the last minute.
Yep.
Excuses or explanations, because I don't have all the facts, but I will make the assurances that we won't be here next year talking like this.
Well, I can, I can tell you for one that I'm super happy that a check came through, so that we didn't have to, you know, have any further discussion added tonight, other than to make a motion to approve and move forward, because it is, it is a vital, you know, and it's an important part of the town.
I understand, sir. So I'm hoping we can generate some more interest.
Nice. That'd be good. We could use it.
Yes.
Any more discussion?
No.
Hannah, is there anybody online?
It's board discussion, but I gave him an opportunity to-
I know, I know. I just was, Julie talked about she might call in.
Oh, well, if she did, that's, she'd be there, but.
So.
I have a motion. I have a second. All those in favor? That's all, sadly.
Thank you.
Thank you for coming and taking the time to-
Anytime.
Yep, thank you.
Thank you.
Rapid feedback, signed, discussion, and possible action with David Palmer.
Do you want to stay over there, or do you want to come over here?
Come on up here. Come on up in the comfy seat.
I mean, I'm leaving it up to you. It's up to you.
Thank you.
So David came to me a little while back after reaching out to the board. He has some serious concerns with the speed on Route seven, as many people have those concerns. And I would just like to say thank you for spearheading this whole thing and doing the research. He's done a lot of research and helped me find the pricing on it. When I presented it to the board, I told them we could probably use money from the Capital Projects Fund. However, if you choose to buy them, we do have some money in, like, Bill's wage line. There's about nine thousand there, and some of it will go toward the board secretary position, but the rest could absolutely cover these signs, so all the money. Do you want to share what you learned?
If I may.
Absolutely.
Well, first of all, I want to thank Tara so much for-
Would you just state your name for everyone, please, Dave?
David Palmer.
Thank you.
Resident of Powell for fifty-four years, I think. And, yes, regarding the speed on Route seven here in Powell Center, it has been a concern voiced to me and for quite some time, and I know you folks are keenly aware of it as well. The so I have checked with the town of Shasberry to see how their signage was doing, and they said that they thought that it was not so much as a deterrent as it was just a reminder to a lot of folks in their little village. Now, again, it's on Route seven A and not on a main thoroughfare like we have. But all that being considered, I did speak with Sheriff James Gully, and James was very, very agreeable in that he said, yes, he thought, in his opinion, that it would be valuable for he said, many times they find that the speeders are are not purposely negligent. They have their minds on other things, obviously, and that's right or wrong, and-
That's a little iffy.
I'm sorry.
That's a little iffy at best, right?
Right. But so if these signs could be used as a reminder, but it increases awareness, he said certainly. It's a much clearer visual for your speeds, especially when you're coming up from the south, heading north, and after you are getting off that two-lane highway in the north position. And the signs I are questionably adequate in terms of speed reduction and then a posting of forty. A lot of people do say oh, bye, and I've even had people ask me by the store here, and I'm sure we can get into a lot of stories about what we've experienced, but anyway, from Sheriff Gully's viewpoint, that is in many cases, it's an accident reduction. With the school just up the road here, I know we do have our little signs. The school is set back from the road, which is wonderful. However, when parents pick up their children and they're coming to that intersection, that could very well be a problem as well. So these signs that Tara and I had reviewed were highly visible, and I guess that's the key. And what they also will do, and I talked to Carl about this earlier, is that they can record. So that depending upon the quality of the system that we're looking at, and the two, the early items that we were proposing are solar power, however, they can also be hardwired as well, if that were a possibility. And so that was Sheriff Gully's input, and he also said that at any time, he would be more than happy to come down and address any questions or concerns that any of us might have. So I thought that was very nice. Secondly, with Sergeant Loomis of the Vermont State Police, I was trying to get in touch with him, God bless him, for a couple of days, and he was so busy with the accident that was down the road here. And, but we did finally get together, and one of the things that he mentioned was that with the type of systems that we would be looking at would be to record the times of the day where offenses are many times happening, okay, be it early morning, evening, weekends, whatever. And Sheriff Gully had mentioned the same thing. So that would be a good possibility as far as setting up observations, you know, with the Sheriff's Department and so on. And also a thing that was mentioned that I never even thought of with Sergeant Loomis saying, that sometimes these signs are oh, what do I want to say? For young people, younger drivers, it's a goal to see how high they can get the readout. With the capabilities of these signs, you can put a cap on them so that they don't read above a certain speed limit, okay? So if you're some young fellow might want to go eighty and see if it registers at that, and so you can help avoid that situation. So there are a lot of excellent, positive aspects to all of this. I did speak with Dave Fowle, who is one of the members of the Friends of Powell. So he said that they would be very happy to consider the monies to offset what all this is about, as well as what you just stated, Tara. So hopefully, with you folks, it's something that you'll very highly consider. I would be most happy to work with whomever you suggest to follow it through.
And as I stated with the board earlier, I'm more than happy to continue this process through the permitting and that sort of thing. But I also wanted to point out, if these collect data, it might enable us to work with the state even more to say, get a crosswalk put in down by the school with a flashing light. If I have data that I can say, look at how fast they're going through our school zone. I mean, you can't even cross the street down there without, like, waiting, and then it's dangerous, so you know, the hope would be that this could help with even further
maybe put upgrades to our-
Processed, anything that you do with the US highway.
Yes, it all has to go under the hands- Through the state and through the federal, you know, not just the process.
And I think it's a permit, I guess, is required, and you have to go through that, but yes.
So I want to be clear. I know that we're not changing the speed limit or proposing to change the speed limit. We are just buying a more visible neon type of lit sign that posts flashes your speed as you go by, as we've seen every, I just want to make everyone aware, clear of what we're, what we're talking about.
And it will collect data for us to use.
Right, so, which is, which, if I'm not mistaken, and I'm assuming this, but I think I'm making the right assumption, we can present this data to our law enforcement organization, Sheriff's Department, State Police, and we can say, man, every Friday from five PM to nine, it's really bad. Right? That data will be there, and we can present that to try to change things, or whatever the timeframe is. That's where the data would come in, useful to our law enforcement agencies. Am I correct?
Your interpretation is perfect, Mike. Yes.
And not only that, law enforcement, but state highway. Because then we could turn around and say, here's the data. We really need to have maybe a stoplight so that kids can cross there during certain periods of the day.
Well, I appreciate you bringing in. I mean, I've definitely thought that signage around the school was inadequate for a long time. And I do know these signs closer to Boston, I've noticed, when it's giving you feedback, when you're hitting the speed limit, you get a smiley face. So if we can look into this smiley face.
This has like cloud options.
Right.
And, yeah, you can make those changes through the cloud. It's a pretty nice system.
Speaking of that, I remember up in, I think it's Manchester, they had one, and had a little smiley face, but also it's with your speed if you're under. It says yep, and if you're not, it's no. So.
I know where that was. I know exactly where that one is.
So, okay, well.
Mike, do you need a motion?
Yeah, I would entertain a motion.
Make them, I'll let you word it. You word it out a lot better than I-
I, I think the next, my question is gonna come under discussion, but I need the motion first to purchase this.
I'll make the motion that we go forward with the purchase. I'll make the motion that we go forward with the purchase of two speed, I don't know what you would call them.
Rapid feedback.
Rapid feedback signs to place within Route seven.
Which will then are forty mile an hour.
Within the forty mile an hour limit.
And authorize our executive secretary or executive assistant to pursue the proper permitting
I'll second that and we'll motion.
I'm gonna, I'm gonna put the amount in there, the quoted amount that we have here of seven thousand two hundred and twenty-two dollars. Okay, I just want to have that in there so we know.
Question, Mike? And hopefully there's, there's not going to be no permit fees. How do we handle that?
There might be. But that's within my purchasing. That would be under my purchasing amount anyways. This is definitely not.
Good question.
Also installation, you know, with solar, it's not
It's not nearly as much.
I have a motion, I have a second. Is there any discussion? I have just a couple of questions because I think we need to make sure before we vote, we know where the money's going to come from. So what is the board's pleasure on where we obtain the money? Or where we take it from?
I believe Tara's suggestion was good.
Um, Carl, I'm just want to make sure that we know where it's coming from out here on record and there's no there's no question of where the money's coming from.
So we have around nine thousand left over from Bill's salary in the general fund. That's separate from road, what Joel had. So if we use a portion of that to cover in this fiscal year till July one for the board secretary, that leaves plenty to cover.
I think that's fine.
So I have a motion and I have a second and we are in agreement that the money's going to come from that fund. Is that good?
That's good.
Any more discussion? All those in favor? Thank you for
Well, thank you.
Thank you for all the hard work, David. We'll look forward to working with you, Tara, and we'll go from there.
Thank you.
Thanks again.
Thank you, brother.
Community Garden Project Discussion with Ashley Ferentz.
I'm Ashley Barrington. I'm a resident of Powell. I've lived here since twenty twenty-one. I live here with my husband and my two children. I work in Powell. And I want to propose that we set up a community garden on Center Street. The idea behind the program would be that it's run by community members. The whole thing is designed by community members and partners, local partners. And it would be hopefully the first and kind of a network of community guardians throughout Bennington County as an initiative to create a regenerative food commons, which was a goal set by the Bennington County Conservation District, and that's why Michael is here with me. These are my pleasures of support, and so I'm here to ask you guys for your support too.
I think it's a great idea. Thank you for bringing it.
Do you have any ideas on where you would do it?
So I'm not really sure how the land on Center Street is parceled out. So it's kind of really up to you guys, whatever permissions you want to allow us.
And were you thinking about starting the garden this year or is it something you're planning this year and then starting next year?
It'd be mostly about forming the working groups and, you know, getting the people together, getting the stakeholders in and planning and designing maybe some simple infrastructure towards the end of summer and fall. And then hopefully we'd be ready to plant by spring next year.
Size you're looking for?
It can be as big or as small as Powell wants it. But I know that Powell wants something like this. You know, I'm sure you guys have seen the visioning survey and Power Powell report. You know, this is something that, that Powell residents do really want. As someone with children here, it would be so nice to have like a nice outdoor recreational place where I can bring my kids in. That doesn't cost me any money.
So maybe would you want to work with the Conservation Commission in identifying inappropriate?
Well, wouldn't that be more Parks and Rec because that is park?
It could be either one. Mike, if you would work with them to identify, hold on one second, sorry. To identifying like a couple of places that would work. And maybe different size options because I agree with you, people here do want that. And so then if you could bring back different options to the board, that might be helpful.
And I'll just add, Michael Fernandez, District Manager of the Bennington County Conservation District. Ashley was working with us as an intern for a short time and towards the end of her internship, we applied, well, Ashley applied and I submitted grant through the Vermont Community Foundation to begin that scoping process. As well as provide participant stipends. It's something we found really useful in all our public engagement efforts over these last few years. It's like twenty-five, thirty dollar stipends for residents to be able to come in, give their input and do some really deep planning work. And there's also, I think it should be mentioned that the district has a number of pieces of equipment. Primarily a BCS walk behind tractor that we've incorporated into our equipment cooperative that we're really hoping to support projects like this with. So Ashley and Powell, of course, will have the district's full support and backing as well as our our equipment to make sure this works out and works well and is efficiently executed.
I've also spoken with Erin of the Bennington County Multicultural Center. And she has expressed that I can get in touch with her because they have an extensive volunteer network. So if we need help with the actual labor of it, she has offered offered those services as well.
Do you plan on? I mean, it is still a residential neighborhood. Do you plan to go through and talk to all the residents before you start work on that so that you can get?
So I have talked to a few people in the area. I wasn't sure if a town like survey would be appropriate because so many have already been done. I kind of feel like people might be able to curate out. But I would be happy to host, you know, some kind of town hall or something like that to get people to.
I was thinking of more of the neighbors. Basically, it's the neighbors on the street to go to talk to them. Because if you turn around and bring a project like that in here and you're not getting the neighbors buy-in on it, it's going to be very difficult for you to try to move forward.
Yeah, absolutely. And, you know, I really want as much community involvement with this as possible. Because for me, that's going to make it so it's sustainable. I know that there was a community garden here in the past. I don't know why it failed, but I'm hoping that the process and kind of the methods that I, that I want to use to get people really engaged with this will ensure that it's successful long term. So I'm absolutely open to door-to-door knocking. You know, marketing and things like that, trying to get people, you know.
I like the idea of working with Parks and Rec to identify a location also. I think that's
I think we could do that. And also if you want a connection to some direct neighbors here as well, happy to connect you with them.
Yeah, I was hoping as some support from the town that you guys could offer maybe a liaison, someone to represent the town and add these working groups and yeah, and also, you know, maybe some help with outreach and things like that.
So what I'm hearing you ask for, Ashley, is the board's blessing to move forward with this and the actual gardening portion of it wouldn't take place until twenty twenty-six. And I think, I think we're on the right track. I think, I think having Parks and Rec involved and in the Conservation Commission, just maybe one from each or whatever. I also heard that you're very open to meeting with the neighbors. I think probably we could probably maybe even set something up here where you have access to, instead of doing a door-to-door thing, you could, you could have access to this room some afternoon. Whatever your, your time schedule and the neighbors, you could certainly have a group in here from the neighborhood to sit in here and talk about your project. I would think, and I'm not telling you how to do it, but I would think if you have some sort of a plan in place when you talk to the neighbors would be beneficial for you of your layout, where it's going to be, all that kind of rather than come in and say, oh, we're going to do a garden. Well, where, right? Just, just giving you my thoughts.
Yeah, so I would, I would love to meet with the Parks and Rec and the Conservation Commission and talk about potential sites for that, to get a better idea of, you know, what moving forward, how it's going to look.
Sure.
It's a great idea. And I think your idea too about the fact that opening it up to children.
And I will add also that I'm also, I have touched base with Pastor Jason with Faith Church. And I will be meeting with him on Saturday to actually create another community garden on their new property on three forty-six, so.
I hate to, I'm going to ask this because will there be any expenditure of town money at this point?
Not during the planning phase of potentially moving forward, you know, twenty twenty-six and beyond. There might be, I might ask for some kind of support, a contribution of some form, but what that looks like now I'm not.
Okay, we, we haven't crossed that bridge yet.
Right, yeah.
We're just saying yes to the concept, not yes to the actual project. Am I correct?
Right, yeah. A lot of support would also be really beneficial if we want to apply for grants or anything like that, so.
It will also be, I think it's really important to emphasize the importance of really good soil toxins testing in this particular environment. We're talking about a heavy urban area. Or Vermont, at least, we, the district considers these areas peri-urban or urban. Tends to lead to a lot of lead and other heavy metals. So will, the district will be providing that soil sampling support to make sure that the site that is selected is either clear of toxins or we're able to take remediation steps to ensure that people aren't intaking toxins.
It will make people sick by actually growing good food.
Right, toxic tomato.
Okay, I want to entertain a motion for the a letter of support from the board.
I'll move to
I'll second her motion.
The board to give you a letter of support to move ahead with the planning of this community garden and support for that process throughout the next year. Understanding that you will be working with the Parks and Recreation along with the Conservation Commission to come back to us with the family you have it.
Awesome. Thank you. Thank you so much.
That's a pretty good motion. I have a motion. I have a second. Any more discussion? All those in favor? Thank you, Ashley. Thank you for taking that.
Thanks so much.
I think it's, I think it's a pretty cool project.
Thanks to the Conservation District. That's
Thank you. Thank you, Mike.
Good to see everybody.
Good to see you.
When did he leave? He'll be back to his phone and his glasses.
Transfer station discussion impossible action. You're up, Tom.
So I sent you all those questions and I realized I never put the container conversation on the bullet points, so I added that to the
or not new as usuals anyhow. The travel get that.
Did you see the map that I drew? Did you like the little map I drew?
So I think one of the I think one of the biggest things that with the email that we got from Tara. I guess we can wait a minute for Carl back in, I guess. So I think one of the biggest questions in the email that we got from Tara today was to kind of get a project manager to move forward with this so we don't have to keep coming back to the board a hundred times to make decisions so that we can move forward with this project.
And it's just more efficient if, if one person is making decisions based on what the board has agreed upon. Because it's, it gets a little too confusing because we have, you know, Joel's got part of it, you've got some of it. Tom's got a lot of it and it's just as easy. We can get on the same page with one person that works with Tom to make sure everything's getting done.
I'd be willing to take that.
You should, you have enough time. I mean, you're chairman and you're zoning administrator. I just don't want no, do you, I'm just making, I'm just saying that's all.
I know I have enough time. I can manage my time pretty wisely. To be honest with you. What's the board's pleasure with that? I just think we need to have a project manager here rather than
I will make a motion, yeah.
The project manager's job is going to be what? I mean, it's, yeah, managed project, but what is, what will that entail?
I think it's a little bit for lack of a better word, it's not very organized right now. We don't have site plans. We have no idea where anything's going over there. We have containers that were delivered that we we don't know if we're going to lease them or buy them. There, there are things that have sort of been put in motion and it's like a train moving and we just got to slow it down.
Like best practices too, right? And operation understanding from OSHA, what's going on there.
That's exactly correct, yes. There's a lot.
Did we, can I ask a question? Except like this was probably, I mean, I think this started before I was on board necessarily and that you guys had the conversations and brought this in. I'm not even quite sure how to word this. Like, who made the presentation to us? Did it look like there was going to be more support initially? Like how, like
So I think the decision was made to buy compactors.
And I'm glad we did.
Money, which was a great
I like that.
But then we didn't really appoint a project manager.
Okay.
We did, we said, okay, Joel, you're going to help Tom with the concrete. And so now we have two department heads and two select board members kind of helping with this, but it's
There's nobody in charge.
There's nobody in charge. And Tom is our department head at the transfer station.
Right.
He should be in charge of his policies and, and the way this is going. So I just want to make sure that we're, we're not.
Tom should be in charge of, as far as policies go, Tom should be in charge of policies that the select board puts in place.
Yes, the policies that you all determine should be there. Yes, or the operational procedures that you all determine.
Because ultimately it comes back onto us as if something's So we, the board should be the one putting the policies in place with Tom's input.
Correct.
Okay, we're not just us willy-nilly making a policy, right? So I just want to be clear on that.
I just, I just, I just wanted to have an idea, okay, we're, Mike's going to be the project.
Wait a minute, I just said I would take it on. I think the board needs to make that decision.
I'm using you as an example. I use you as an example because you are, all right, but whoever. So they know when they go into this position exactly what's expected because I don't want to put somebody in a position where we're saying, you're project manager and that's it.
And I'm just using that term because I think that's the term to use because it's
It is.
I'm getting very stressed out watching from afar this just the, the way it's going. And maybe I'm a little too by the book, but I'm like, we need to
I'll take that any day of the week.
Position was
We need to
Out of trouble.
Slow down.
Doing that. That's why you're doing this right now.
But like I said, like, I can do the best I can with like these drawings of a map and that sort of stuff, but is that really what we need?
I do think that's outside of your wheelhouse. I do think that is unfair to ask you to do that. I do not think you can be the project manager of this, nor do you want to be.
I don't want to be.
So and I
Sarah, could I have the pen? I'll have it.
And I do think, Mike. Sorry, I'm laughing.
No, go ahead, go for it.
Like basically. Oh, okay, are we trained on how to do this?
No.
Right, well, as far as what?
Like, do we need? We've got. So we get the, no, of course you can do that.
Oh, okay.
But like, the contractor, like the actual physical workings, I agree, I think it's a great idea, I think it's gonna save us money. I agree, we have to save money in this place, we can't keep losing money on the transfer station. And I love the idea of the compactors, but now it's just like the implementation, I'm just wondering.
I I would get trained. You have an understanding of how they work, right?
Oh, I know exactly that.
And he has the manual, and he just handed me, he did take the lockout, tagout safety training. Okay.
But we need it like a written procedure, you know, we need, when is it gonna, when does the maintenance happen? Is it every six months, or every year? Who's doing the maintenance? Um, passive insurance doesn't really wanna hear that we're doing the maintenance, they rather we contract that out, so that's all stuff that we need to fit right into a po- a policy.
And that, and that was some of the questions that when we met with Casella.
Yeah.
We asked them to give us a
They were very lax.
Maintenance.
They've been, they've been pretty lax in giving us any quotes, to be honest with you, Tom's not wrong there.
No, it's just hardening the 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 lack of input that side of it, considering how long ago we met and we asked the questions.
Mike? Yep. How would you see this position? I think, I think the project manager for, like Tara said, for lack of a better term um because things have been willy-nilly, okay? It's it's this person's talking to, for instance, Tom and I have both talked to Randy from Casella. Okay, and I think that's where the, um, so so I'm guilty of this as as well. Um, that's where we have, we have two containers dropped off over there without this board making a decision on whether or not we're gonna own containers or whether we're gonna lease containers. Okay, so there's two containers sitting over there right now that no one technically has ordered. Okay, Tom or myself, it was assumed that we're gonna get the containers and lease them, okay? So I I think it gives us one contact person, right now I think there's too many contact people.
I agree with it, I agree.
This one's doing this and this one's over here, and Joel's, Joel's, um you know, we were gonna order concrete from this one, but wait a minute, this guy's a lot cheaper, so that's where we're gonna get the concrete from, where and and it turned out we got from the cheaper place, we're gonna make make that very clear.
Right.
But that wasn't the initial part of it. The initial part was we were just gonna call Peckham or whoever it is.
We were more about worried about getting the concrete in than turning around and shopping for the lowest price.
Exactly, okay, so I think that's where, and I think this board's been guilty of not really um preparing ourselves for this project, not that it, not that it has cost us any extra money because it hasn't.
No.
Okay, but it, it could have.
Right.
And and I also think that moving forward, we I think we've been trying not I think things have been being pushed along way too fast, right? It's it's okay, the the compactors are in place, they're bolted down, the the they're wired up, they're whatever. Back back to back to container in, back to container in, hook it up, and we're gonna use it, that's not how it works.
Right.
It can't work like that, we don't have any we have zero policies, we have zero procedures. We we have um.
We don't have, we don't have the certification.
We just don't, we just don't, we we can't hook it's not a good idea in my opinion, to back, to to hook them up now and go and go for broke and start using them Saturday or Friday or whatever. We we need to back up. We need to get some there's a lot of things at the transfer station that need to be addressed. Okay, we need to have the insurance company down, right? And we know what those things are, and we need to address them. The compactors is only one thing, one piece, that's one piece, I mean, it's a major piece, that's the biggest newest piece that needs to be addressed. I, and and to finish this project out and then move forward with the other things, I just think one person needs to be able to talk with Tom and say, hey, look at this is, this is what we're doing. Right, or or what, not this is what we're doing, what are your suggestions on doing this, that, and the other thing, and I I could give you a hundred examples, but I'm not, I don't wanna be here all night, right? So I don't want anybody to be here, let's just get it done and move forward, right? So so I think that um, one person who who is that? Project manager.
Project, but but I think, but I think you're looking, and I agree with you, the way you're looking at it, we're looking, we're, we've been myopically looking at these two comp packers, and we haven't been looking at everything else there.
I have.
Yeah. Well, but but.
I know, no. And and I'm gonna, I'm gonna be the first one to sit here and tell you, Carol, that I've been, this is my sixth year on board, right? And up until now, I've turned a blind eye to the transfer station, okay, and I think that that any board member that's been in here in the past will tell you the same thing, because the transfer station is just it's that entity that just is there, right? And and that's where, from a business standpoint, I have failed, been the board chair for five years now, I've failed by not being more involved in what goes on over there, because because when you're losing the amount of money that we are every year on on this we should have been doing something about it years ago.
But you get, but the empty boxes, you could throw the garbage in, and you know what? You move on to something else, and that's been the problem.
Exactly, and I'm not faulting anybody, okay, I'm I'm faulting myself.
But it's just the way it is.
That's right, I'm gonna sit here and fault myself for this.
There's there's two things, and you're partially correct. And uh because we've been working, if you look, we've been working with all the departments, and now we've been focusing more on transfer station. And yet, we haven't the last four or five years prior, initially, didn't take, can do a whole lot of focus on the transfer station, only on certain subjects within the transfer station. And now we're looking at the transfer station as a whole.
As a whole.
And, you know, we're not trying to pick on you, Tom, or just it's just a situation, you know, it's 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 been on the radar, but now we've got certain things have settled down, other projects that have been going on in town, now we can focus and give you some assistance on that, and uh and yes, I mean, I didn't realize certain things until, you know, I helped fill in, and then I was noticing a lot more things down there, and, you know, the the more you're there, the more you see it, right, wrong, or indifferent, and as you, everybody, I always look at it as the other eyes. That you, you move people around at a business to see their input because they look at something differently. You get there same time every day, and you do the same thing every day, you get complacent. Right, wrong, or different on that also, it just, you know, that's not what we're here for. And I said to um Tara earlier, that I wanted to get the um manufacturer's information on the the process, the PMs and all that, so I could look at it, and I hadn't mentioned it, or sent an email out to the board yet, so I could take and try to start looking at a procedural thing and offer a suggestion with you. Um, but without having that information in front of me, I couldn't take it, and I'm not just gonna throw something out there.
I reached out to um Williamstown for their um policies and procedures handbook that they have
Yep.
for for their compactors, I'll have it Monday. Um he's on, he's on vacation, took a couple days off
Yeah.
this weekend, so I'll have that Monday, we can certainly um build from that, take
Yep.
what is functional for us, you know, or anybody else for that matter, that has compactors in place um and procedures and policies and and um tailor it to our situation, I don't think it's the same, but it's, you know, there there's definitely some similarities, right?
We take what's similar to us and we add what we need to.
That's right. So I'd like to, I'd like to go ahead and move forward with somebody who is the manager, project manager, or whatever you guys wanna call it, doesn't matter to me.
And just
Oversight.
So you're aware, some of these questions will be answered in those procedural procedural things, so they don't necessarily have to be answered tonight, like the procedures for lockout, tagout, and the electric shut-off policy and the uh maintenance on compactors, that stuff can wait until.
Yeah, I think we need the policies to do that, but it's also really helpful, I think, to know the things that need to be answered, I get it, like.
Yes, but yeah, the big one is, I suppose gonna work with Tom to get this done.
So what's your pleasure on um project over senior manager, or how are you on? How are you on?
Support, Mike volunteered uh as project manager.
I'll second that.
Any more discussion? All in favor?
Hi.
Just reach out, can you need help with something?
I'll reach out to anybody, that's fine, I'm not afraid to reach out if I need some, I need somebody to do something or whatever, it's, and then, you know, kind of report back and.
And I think that works out a hell of a lot better.
I'd like to get a copy of the manuals though, so I can take a look at that, and when we get the other, I can confer on it and stuff.
Um, traffic pattern, I think that that can be addressed. Um, I think our insurance company addressed that a little bit.
Yeah, he said um changing it, not a great idea, have them come down, but they usually do.
Can I see that map for a minute?
I didn't.
No.
That's the scale.
So like when you come down, you go here to pay.
Yeah.
You come back around through this little cross and park here.
Right.
And then when you leave, you go back out this way and up and around. But we're gonna need signage, and we're gonna hopefully need probably arrows.
Yeah.
Let's just see how it all plays.
It's gonna be a learning curve.
I I think we can get um we can make the signage, Joel told me that he can, he can make signage. Um, I think, I think arrows on the on the blacktop and that kind of stuff. Um, I believe I can get equipment to um have that done, or or we can contract that out as well, however we decide. Um, I don't think that would be an incredibly expensive thing.
That's right, Joel might have most of the signs just kicking around there.
Yeah.
We don't need, we don't need the top-notch signs, we just need some that are.
I think, you know, an arrow, the arrows directing people around and and.
A stop sign there at the.
That's right.
Well, it is, but they can always sell them out.
Yeah.
And here, here's what I wanted to say too, a lot of people have uh compost, that's still gonna stay down to shed. A lot of people will be going down that way, then they'll be coming back up, but we wanna keep them on the on the right and cut it across like everybody else. I mean, these are, these are things that I've been, I've been thinking about, and then they can back up around there, and there's plenty of room to turn around back there, we have a lot of room. And we're gonna get the uh, we're gonna get the the books uh moved back up there, like, I wanna get them to first.
I think one of the things that we have to really make sure of is that we don't have any um pedestrian traffic behind the compactors where we can't see what's going on and that kind of stuff.
That's why I have cameras.
Well, you should have some, you should have some like gates or something there.
That's right.
So people don't walk there, camera ain't gonna do you no good.
There's definitely, definitely need signage that states that, so.
Or even maybe the designated parking spot for the compost, you know what I mean, instead of it just being open
Right.
stirrup it, though, it's, you know it it's designated where you park for them.
And what we could do right there, where people have to come back around and go across, is just have have that, like, no the parking, like they have at the police station, so, we have something like that, you know, would would definitely help.
Yeah.
You know, a stop sign right there, people coming in.
I think we need to get a um, we need to try to get a Google map, you know, well, I know, I I I know what we can do here.
Trace from Google Maps.
Well, but what we can do, I know exactly. Um, we can get Carl filling a wave of.
Twelve thirty Sunday.
He's gonna come over and do that, okay.
They're having me.
Making pictures.
No, he's coming over Sunday, it's probably twelve thirty, I'm gonna do it for this, and I'm also going for a permit. But once I get that, I get that to the the uh and some other things I have to do yet.
Having having Carl give us an aerial off his drone.
Yep.
He takes great photos, we can, then we'll have it physically in front of us at at our next meeting, and we can say, this is what we're doing right here, this is, there's a stop sign gonna be here, there's a yield sign gonna be here, there's arrows here, whatever, okay, perfect.
Hand copy of that out once we decide.
Yeah.
I got that set up, that's my deal.
Okay.
We're good for that.
Good.
Um.
It's gonna be a gorgeous day too, so.
I think we need to the tires what, we haven't made a decision on tires yet. Um I think that's a decision that needs to be made. Are we gonna take tires or aren't we gonna take tires?
I'm not sure input on that last time, I'm trying to.
Well, we had, I think we had twenty seven brought in on uh Saturday. So, I think, we don't know what we're gonna do with them, that's one thing right there, but
Right.
we don't take them, we just help people leave, like, forever.
My question to you is, is, is the the person that comes and gets tires when do they come and pick tires up?
They need, I need to call them.
All right.
This is what I wanted to do, was find out if we're gonna take tires then I can call them down and get them, but if we're not gonna take tires you know, next year, then I'm gonna have to wait till probably the very end of the month and not take anymore. So that that's, that's one of the things I wanted, I've got a list here myself, what we're doing.
Because the new.
Because I wonder if they're thinking the same thing, like, what if, what if we?
Why don't we just get rid of the tires, because he might come, here's my thing. Okay, you're gonna call in a month from now, well, he might not come down for another month to pick those tires up. And how, when was the last time did he come down to pick tires up?
Next year, when I called him.
Okay.
And he said he'd be down on.
How many tires does he usually take on a pickup, on a load?
Two hundred and fifty.
How many tires do we have there right now?
About two hundred and seventy-five, three hundred.
Okay, so we have two loads of tires there right now.
Yeah, maybe he won't come down for part two load.
I understand that, but wouldn't it be logical? Let's just get those tires, let's give him a call, get him in, and pick those tires up, because whether we have fifty tires or a hundred tires, he's still not gonna come down and pick tires up. You've already got more tires than what he's going to come and pick up, so let's just get them picked up.
We get, I'll get them picked up, but where are we gonna take them next year?
Well, can I ask this question, if this is a possibility? What if we have a designated time period, right, just like we have a designated time to bring in certain chemicals and things that you can't just normally drop off? What if there's?
That's run, that's run by the uh Solid Waste Alliance.
The chemical, but what she's asking.
Right, but I'm talking.
I know, I know what you're asking.
Yeah, like, what if we did this?
That's run by somebody.
No, 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 I don't want them to run it, what I'm saying is if that was kind of a model, twice a year, people know that there is a time there's a two-week period where you can bring tires, otherwise you cannot, and then you have someone pick them up. Is that? I'm just wondering.
Give him like a month or something like that.
Drop your tires off in April, drop your tires off in.
There's, there's two times a year, right, when people get tires, you get snow tires put on, and you get summer tires put on.
Exactly.
I know exactly what you're thinking.
Mike, what does, what does Williamstown do for their tires?
They don't take them.
They don't take them.
Bennington doesn't either.
Bennington doesn't take their tires, Bennington sends you to Bennington Tire.
He has a trailer and you back up and throw it.
And you back up and put it, and odds are, we'll probably have to take the hundred tires that we're gonna have and take it to Bennington Tire and pay him and put them in there. I don't know how that's gonna get done, but if.
You're gonna do it.
Those tire-throwing days are long gone by.
I'll show you how it.
But you know what I'm saying, Tom, is and I, and in true how many tires do you bring in in a year?
Well, he sent a trailer. Four hundred and fifty.
Four hundred and fifty.
We see we have, we have four tires on a three dump day, and that's where the majority of.
We shouldn't have free tires on dump day.
When, when he comes down and gets a load does he take all of them, or he just takes as many as he can fit, and there's always.
This guy just throws them on loops, this is a new guy, and, you know, he just sends the single guy down, and he just pitches them on, cause then stacks them on up and pisses more on, they used to have them, they stack them.
Does he, so so Tara's question is, does he take all of the tires or whatever he can get on the truck?
Two hundred and fifty.
Okay, don't care how he gets them on there. He can put them, cut them up with the sawzall for all I care.
Too many tires. That's a lot of tires.
Well, that was my point, is, is let's just get a load of tires out now.
Yeah. Or maybe a couple times.
Alright, and then regardless of whether we make the decision to do, take tires or not, there should, he should be coming down here and getting a load of tires out.
So are we just gonna decide not to take tires? It sounds like we need to make a decision.
I think we should need to make a decision. We beat this around and I'm sick of beating it around. Are we taking them around?
I'll make a motion that we stop taking tires at our transfer station.
On July first.
As of July first, just like the, it's standardized and the rest of the communities around us. It's, it's hard for us to take and get rid of them and it, it, it's, it's getting harder and harder, it seems like every year, to take it, find a company to take and get rid of them.
Yeah, the only ones that stay.
And it's getting more and more expensive.
Yeah.
I have a motion, do I have a second?
I'll second that.
Do we have any more discussion on tires? All in favor of not taking tires? Um, use motor oil. Or oil.
In general.
Oil period.
That was uh, Joel and I were talking about what they do with theirs, you say, just put them in uh the drums. And they roll the drums out and they take them up to Bennington. Take them on their trucks, take them up to Bennington, unload them up there and they burn.
I I went over there last, I don't know what it was, whatever, Saturday, I think I was there.
Saturday, right.
Yeah, my, one, one, one day just blends into the next right now, Tom.
I understand.
I was there Saturday. The, the motor oil storage is still a problem, and we have to decide that, in my opinion. We have to decide how and what we're gonna do with that tonight and do it, and not look at the the bin we have and whatever else is going on. So if we're gonna continue to take oil, then we need to come up with something that, in my opinion, or not in my opinion, in our insurance company's opinion or recommendations is better than the way we store it now.
Correct.
Cause the way we store it now is not.
Right.
Not kosher. It's not.
We have a container that can be utilized if we put a roof over it. And the thing is, how are we gonna dispose of it afterwards?
That's right.
And, I mean, we, it's one thing if we had local garage, is there people that had used oil burners or used oil furnaces, excuse me.
There's people that come and get it.
Then we'll take it.
That's right.
You know, they'd have to bring their own pumps, cause I don't believe we have a pump to take and pump it out of that thing.
The fifty five gallon barrel idea, I, Joel talked to me about that actually, is not a horrible idea because, because you can, uh, I have a waste oil furnace, I, I don't, but theoretically, let's say I did. Okay, I don't have, I have a waste oil burner in my garage or my warehouse. I bring an empty fifty five gallon drum to the town and poundable transfer station, right? And I pick up a full. And then Tom calls me again when that one's getting full and I bring another empty and I rotate it out, right? That, that to me makes way more sense, because we can take a fifty five gallon container.
Right.
And we can put it inside the trailer.
Right.
But we can also take that fifty five gallon container and we can have it in a, in a another container that will contain that if it spills.
Right.
Okay, that's the most important thing. Right? So the most important, that's right, the container center.
Right.
Needs to be bigger by a little bit than.
Halfway.
Than, than what your.
Correct.
Okay, than what your container is. That to me is the biggest thing. So we can certainly take that, you know, if, if we have however we set it up. There's, I'm sure there's, I'm sure we can find a pretty good idea how to do that, but it needs to be done. We can't keep talking about this, this, to this meeting, then bring it back on the twenty second, and then bring it back the second week in June. And then again, it needs to be done now. Whatever we decide, needs to be done.
Here's, here's the thing, Mike, you're putting in a containment thing like that. We're gonna have power in there. I'm running power over so we can have some lights in there. Too many times I've been in there and the doors blown shut and you can't see anything. And uh, so what we do is, we get a pump in there, pump it into their thing and not even move ours. That would, that would.
That would be, that would be good.
Easiest thing to do.
We're beating a dead horse. I'll make the motion that we accept oil on a twenty five cent charge. And uh, we'll figure out the details after. We'll do the fifty five gallon drum.
Twenty five cent?
That's what Bennington charges, twenty five cents per quart.
Oh, okay. I'm thinking if by bringing fifty gallons.
No, 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 twenty five, Bennington charges twenty five cents a quart.
Okay.
Okay.
And that will handle, being handled.
Okay, that works.
That works for me.
Okay. And then we'll.
I just need to back up. Did you say you're putting electric in the storage?
Yes.
Okay, that's why we need to side plan.
That's right.
If we're an electric underground and all that, we need it drawn out.
Right. See, this is why we need a project manager. Yeah, no one, I don't think one, I don't think a board member knew we were putting power in those buildings.
I didn't know that.
That's why, that's why we can't, Tom, we can't be making those decisions. You can't be making those decisions. We're the ones that are responsible when the insurance company comes down and says, what the hell is this?
Money.
Yeah.
And it don't, it's probably not cheap to run electric over to the store.
And we gotta look into.
I'm not saying we don't need electric, but we have to know what's going on.
Okay.
You know, we, we as the board have, we're, we're writing checks for all this stuff every every week, every week, we write a check for electric or monthly or whatever, and, you know, so we, we need to know what's going on.
So.
Okay.
We are going to accept oil on a twenty five cent or surcharge or however you wanna call it.
Per quart.
We'll do the fifty five gallon drums with a um catch basin around it, so that if there's a spill of some sort, the oil goes into the catch basin and does not go into the, anyplace else.
Yeah, that'll be a story.
And if there's details to be figured out, we'll let the site manager figure out the details.
There you go, Mike.
Perfect.
But because, because here's the thing, when you get into the, at that point, a lot of these little minor details, you won't be able to figure out until you're there doing it.
That's your motion?
That's my motion.
I'll second your motion.
A motion I have a second, do I have any more discussion on this? Uh, that will, that will start on July, the twenty five cent.
Uh, start July first.
Yep, just hold everyone's there, cause it's the first of the year. Yep.
Alright, alright, now.
I have a motion, do I have a second? All those in favor?
Now, Mike, when the construction, you want to move all the construction inside, correct?
Absolutely, yep.
Yep.
Right, now the scrap metal. What I'd like to do with that would be put that where the first outside dumpster is, where the, the construction dumpster is now. I mean, they can't put, they can't put their uh refrigerators and stuff, but maybe a dryer, washer, lawn mower. They can just get, push right in there, you can set up on top and smash them down. A lot easier, you just reach up over and smash.
Yeah, no, that's, I'd, I'd rather have it there.
Okay with that?
Yep. The only, the only question I have there, um, and because I'm drawing a blank right now, are we going to have to, or maybe there is one there, have a safety rail?
To the bar way.
With a, with an opening, like a gate type of opening, because, because I think the insurance company's telling us that, right?
We have a chain that goes across there.
Which, which area?
But the, where the, where the scrap metal's going.
Yeah.
There's a chain across there now, and I'm just drawing a blank in my mind without.
There is, but, but the, the thing's been bent, so it needs to be straightened out.
We need, we need to make sure that we have proper railing around that dumpster.
Yep, a chain.
Yep.
Put two poles with a chain or just.
Whatever, whatever we have, proper, we have, we have, we have to make sure. I like the idea of the metal where they can get up there and compact it with, with the backhoe. We just have to make sure we have the proper safety rail. That's the word I was looking for, I couldn't find it out.
Yeah.
We could, what we do there, we get uh, we just get some heavy poles, you know, some six to sixes down and and then puts a big eye holes and run a couple, two chains across that with, with snap.
Yeah, something, just, we have to, that's, that's exactly right.
Yep.
Okay.
So we'll get, we'll get those replaced, okay, have your, have your change. Alright, let me just make a note on that.
And the construction debris is going undercover so that we're not paying for water weight.
Right, so there, now, I'm gonna have to have uh, I wanna keep one, like the number two dumpster actually, or the number one, I don't really care. It has a cover on it, because if a unit goes down, we have to have someplace for them to put it. So, and we need to have a cover over, it's trash. So it has to be number one or number two, we gotta keep for, for an extra there. We can do one down yeah, on below there for uh, go maybe one of the paper and so forth. That'll all be the same anyhow. So, you know, these, these things go down, we have to have two spared, we'll have three, three uh construction, we have the, the ones for the, the chairs, mattresses and things like that. And then we have the uh. That's what furniture and stuff is in that one. That's all, that's all, right, goes into the construction. And then the other two are more like regular construction. It really doesn't matter, cause now they're all under the roof, it doesn't matter. Just put them all in together.
Right.
Just throw the stuff off.
I just, I just have a huge problem when we, when we pay by the ton, when we're paying for eight for water, that's eight pounds of a gallon. It adds up, it adds up really quick, okay?
That's why we try to keep everything, the little soaps up, up in the third dumpster down.
Right, but that's what I'm saying, when we're paying eight, eight pounds a gallon, we're paying by the ton, we've spent a lot of money for water.
But a lot of that stuff, Tom, you, you're talking about this stuff, this stuff's gonna be figured out in our total plan. Okay.
You're making a plan.
Alright, you know what I'm saying? It said, I, I agree with you with a lot of this stuff, but until we start really, until the project manager gets into looking at it all and then submits it to us.
Right.
Well, the other thing about the, the scrap metal, it's okay to be outside of that.
Yeah, I'm not, I'm not opposed, I'm not opposed to the scrap metal being outside. The metal doesn't absorb. Yeah, metal, metal doesn't, metal doesn't absorb the water.
Right.
Right. I understand what you're saying.
Yeah, we're, we're good there.
Your concern is you're holding the water and weighing.
Now.
Water should come out of that container when they tip it.
Yeah.
Yeah, when they tip it up.
Okay.
Yeah, my problem is when the furniture is sheet rock insulation.
Who's gonna make up all the rules? You want the rules that I have already in place? And then you look over and make changes if you think you need to make them, or should I just?
I'm, I'm not gonna make a whole bunch of changes by myself.
That's coming back to the board.
Board's gonna make these changes.
That's what I'm saying, I'm sending, I'm sending, I'm sending you the, so, of everything we have, I'm sending you the probably the free dump day. And if you, you know, of course you have to take the tires out, but that's.
I think, I think that uh, everything starts over in a month and a half, two, almost two months.
Yeah, well, I've gotta get a lot of printing done and stuff ahead of time.
Right. So, um, I will have, I'll have a copy of the policies and procedures from Williamstown on Monday. Um, he's gonna send it to me, the PDF and to my, to my email. I, I don't think we're gonna, you know, we're not gonna go by that verbatim for sure. We have our own, we have our own policies and stuff already in place. So we're gonna fine tune. My idea is to fine tune what we have and make it more efficient.
Yep.
Because we're not efficient and we haven't, and we just need to get there. And, and we're on the right track, okay? We're, we're on, we're on, we're on the right road, we're on the right track, we've made all the right turns. We just gotta keep moving forward, but now we have to slow up a little bit to get everything so that we don't go backwards.
Inner workings.
Yep.
Well, I'd say, I'd like to get the stuff to the printers, uh, things for the, the cars. And for the uh for the signs, when the days were closed, so we're not wondering what we're, what five mikes turning we scheduled for this to the coming year, twenty, twenty five, twenty six.
One thing, one thing that I'd like to propose to the select board right now, this is a thought I've had, okay? Because when we put these compactors into operation, okay? If we're gonna ask, I think we're asking too much of Tom when we put these in place for one person to try to be there and direct people.
Yeah, I noticed that on Saturday when I was there.
Okay?
Yep.
I think my, this is my opinion, Tom, you tell me if I'm way off base, whatever, and I'm not trying to step on your toes. I think it should be our job to be there when we put these in place and help Tom to get people acclimated to going into the, into the compact. Okay, so Tom can, Tom can be there and he can take his money.
Yep.
And we can be board members helping, look at Jamie, here's, you can put your garbage here, you put your recyclables here, go down there type thing. So I think, I, I think that we need to be trained on the operation once we come up with the procedures and how we're gonna do things.
That's for me.
I think we all need to go over there on, pick a day. And it can be, it really can be a Wednesday, Friday or Saturday, right? Because it's open.
Right.
Right? So I think we need to pick a day when we can go over. And I, I, we, we can probably call it a working session, right? It's not a board meeting. And I don't, because I don't wanna open, I don't wanna violate open meeting law. I don't wanna, I don't wanna go through that. It could be a work session for the select.
For select board, it'll be a work session.
That's right, so that we can go over there together, and then when, when we open, whatever day it is, we pick a day, whether it's a Wednesday, Friday or Saturday, we can all be there, or as many of us can be there, it's another working session. So that we can help people understand what we're trying to do.
Yeah.
And try to help you, so that it's not all on you.
That'd be nice. Yeah, this, this has been kinda weighing on me a little.
I know, I know, and I don't, I don't wanna put that on you to try to tell people on a Saturday when you got eight cars backed up and the beep beep beep, because nobody's patient and they're blowing the horn. No, that, that's our job. Just my opinion.
Now, what I, what I wanted to do, you know, is, is just go over, I mean, it's only gonna be a few days that were closed. I wanna be, I the Fourth of July is on Friday, but I'd really like to have a weekend off.
Shame on you.
I know, read it. I'd like to take this.
When is the fourth, when is the fourth?
Why don't you take the fourth and the fifth?
Yeah, why don't we close that weekend?
Yeah.
Why don't you take both days?
My wife wouldn't know what to do.
No, no, maybe take those two days and maybe.
Maybe we should, maybe we should ask her first.
Oh no, she hasn't left it. Unless she had.
I'm kidding. Maybe you close, close the Friday, Saturday and open either on a, you know, give it, because everybody's gonna have the garbage from the Fourth of July.
Yeah.
So maybe you open on a Monday. So people, but what I'm saying to you is, is if you're gonna.
Carol, I, I think, I think we close Friday and Saturday for the Fourth and the Fifth, and we open the following Wednesday and get back to us.
You know, here's the thing, we're gonna start selling permits on Wednesday.
Right.
And it's just I mean, I have a pretty good system set up there, I've had it for years.
Right.
Yeah, it's all color coded, everything is.
Alright.
Works out well.
Alright, well, that's minutia that can get dealt with.
Tara has something. Friday, November twenty seventh, we're done.
I don't, I'm not worried about your days off.
Tom, let's not worry about them.
Well, I, I need to get this up to the printer, that's the whole problem.
Okay.
I don't think a lot of the stuff with your rules and stuff changed though, other than the tires.
Other than the tire, basically, tires and the oil.
Right.
That's really all that's gonna change.
I think so.
I mean, the rules.
I don't think there's, I don't think there's a big problem with the days off, because I, I think you're asking for, sounds like you're asking for the Fourth of July, the day before Thanksgiving, uh, correct me if I'm wrong.
No, no, the day after Thanksgiving. The Friday, the noon on December twenty fourth, the noon on December thirty first.
Yeah, that's more than reasonable. More than reasonable.
I think we're good, Tom. Print those out there.
So my.
I could, I could, I could go ahead and work this up, get it to, uh, the printers because of the signs, you know, I'd like to get those out as soon as I can. Get them up, you know.
Tara had something else.
So you were talking about Tom being there alone, that was one of the questions. So Tom currently is the only employee at a transfer station, he has Paul filling in with him. Um, but it, you know, the board needs to decide if they want one employee there, two, or what that's gonna look like.
What I, before we make that decision. Be, I think before we make a decision on one or two employees. Um, for the, for the fiscal year, the, the, the fiscal year starting July first. I think before we make that decision, I think we'll have the compacters in place. I think we'll be able to determine better if one person can do it. And.
After we've been on site.
And, and getting some feedback from.
People.
Tom.
So, so I, I was gonna start mowing.
Right.
Okay.
Paul mowing, and we started mowing pretty directly, so.
So I don't know, but, oh, who do we put over there? Because the last time.
Can you run back home? Sorry. I couldn't help.
Um, yeah, so Joel's gonna want Paul to start mowing soon. In the last time we advertised, we didn't get a ton of interest in that part-time role. Um, and I also would really hesitate to advertise something that's like, because once you hire someone in that position, they're there. Like you have.
We're gonna have, we're gonna have the place up and operational, hopefully before July first, am I correct?
Yeah, I'd like to have it in the next month.
I would like that we would turn around and go in with Tom and. See what, see what it is.
I agree, I think we need to be there like you're suggesting for that day, like that we show up, that we work that with you and have a much better idea.
And I think we need to, so, so this is my opinion on that, right? Because, correct me if I'm wrong, you have, you have fifty residents. That show up every Wednesday, and you have seventy-five residents that show up every Friday, and then a hundred and fifty that show, and I'm just being hypothetical with numbers. But the same people show up every Wednesday, the same people show up every Friday, and the same people show up every Saturday, right, is that pretty much?
Very, very, very accurate.
Right, so I think it's gonna be a three-day process.
Yeah.
Okay, that we're gonna have to be there, it doesn't have to be all of us on every single given day. But I think, I think we, we really need to be there for those first three days for sure, so that we can help people. And, and the people that go there are gonna pick this up because we're gonna really try to make it very simple.
Yeah.
For, for people to pick up.
Yeah.
But that, that's my, this has been my line of thinking on that, how to make this work.
Yeah, sounds good.
Now, we, we have one more thing I'd like to talk about. Is, I'm gonna have to have somebody to fill in, if I get sick, I'm going hunting for sure. You know, Thanksgiving on, there's no do-ways about that. My wife said, oh, my granddaughter graduation college, I said, well, I'll miss that, I'm sorry. You know, I'm going back to PA, just the way it is. And, uh, so, you know, it's, I'm gonna have to have somebody fill in there. And, you know, I'm not, thank God, I, I don't have any more operations scheduled, so I'm, I'm in good shape there. But, uh, you know, we'll just have to, we'll have to get somebody to come in.
Yep.
And.
I'm gonna take the, the lockout, tagout.
Class, taking out with you.
Myself, because it's, it's not my thing, right?
Yeah.
Oh, it is, I didn't realize.
I, I'm gonna take that. Yeah.
Congratulations.
I'm gonna take that. Um.
On a graduate.
Just, just so that I'm familiar with the whole process.
Yeah.
Okay, I've done similar things, but not that one, so.
Well, and then, what I requested from Tara to get is a, a, a key lock cabinet. I'm gonna bolt onto the, uh, the storage unit there, and then we, that's where we're gonna keep the lock, that, tag and stuff, you know. And we're gonna keep all the, all the keys for the operation of the units, the keys for, to get into the, uh. The electronics and so forth, and all that, so all those keys are gonna be put in there and tagged, it's gonna, it's like fifty tags or something like that.
So, with that said, I could not read that email, I responded and said, did you order that stuff, or was that a list?
I sent it back to you, I said, uh, I did not order.
Alright, so we'll figure that out after, you'll be in tomorrow?
Oh, I'll be in tomorrow.
I will connect with you on that tomorrow.
We have, we, we're gonna get a procedure set up for the lockout, tagout, we don't have that in place right now, I wanna read Williams Town's, why reinvent the wheel? Yes.
Yeah, exactly, we can.
Um, the maintenance, we need, we need to reach out to. Um, Randi, Randall again, and because we asked him specifically the day we were there.
Yeah.
For that, for those numbers, we need to reach out to him again.
Well, he sent, he sent a thing today too that.
Only on account, on the dumpsters, but not on the maintenance.
Right.
Not on the maintenance.
Right, so, um, I'm going down the list here, that's all.
No, I know.
Um, the iWash station needs to be replaced over there, it's something that needs to be done, the insurance company says it needs to be done.
Yeah, he suggested a, he, he suggested a total haul-out and reorganization of your shed.
All we do is do is move the air conditioner around.
The insurance company suggested.
Like it could really use a haul-out, I mean, they're.
There's probably stuff from my brother was transfer station back in the stone ages.
Like the old iWash station should come down, like.
That's my radios, that's my radio stand.
It's.
It needs to be, the whole thing, because our insurance company said it needs to be cleaned out and reorganization of the pay shed due to not having room for necessity. It needs to be done by our insurance company, period, not, not that we're asking or suggesting, our insurance company says, and they gave us a date.
Yeah, they did, and the iWash station should not be on the heater, so that's the main reason, you really gotta kind of organize a little more.
That's another reason.
I know space is very limited.
Exactly.
I know that, but you can use the space a little bit differently.
Just get it organized.
Make a shelf for your radio.
I'm on the same page as you, go look inside my garage and my house, okay? So, we have to develop and do trainees.
Um, but that's, yeah.
But that, we can do that after we look at the Williams Town procedures and see where we're at, where there's no sense reinventing the wheel again.
Yeah.
Which brings us down into our containers now, right?
Yep, so they were, Casella said we could rent them for the two seventy-five per container per month. However, if we buy two containers, which, um, through them would take some time, as he said. I don't really remember the cost, but basically we would.
They were about thirteen thousand.
A hundred and seventy-five dollars a month, they would go into their rotation, so we wouldn't always have our containers. We would sometimes have theirs, but it would get rid of that fee, and Tom found some containers, um. These ones are refurbished from the same company that, um, we purchased the compacters from, for seventy-five hundred per box.
So.
Fifteen hundred.
Shipping, yeah.
Shipping, so they would be, if these were acceptable to sell us, they'd be paid off in two and a half years.
So, I, I asked Justin this afternoon what they do. Okay, and once again, why reinvent the wheel, they rent their containers. Because the life expectancy of a container is less than six years from brand new. Because, um, they are. Uh, no, it's not distressed, the bottoms rot out.
Yep.
Because they are transported open all through the winter months and then northeast, and they never get washed or rinsed off on the underside.
Okay.
So the salt, gold salt is the huge. Enemy.
Yep.
To the containers. That's what Justin told me this morning, the bottoms, the sides, great, top, great, bottom, gone, less than six years.
And if we buy a refurbished one, we don't know how long we're gonna have with that.
So that's, that's why they do what they do.
Alright.
Okay, I, just throwing that out there, it's just a question.
And, and because we decide to rent them today, doesn't mean that a year down the road. We don't decide that, you know what, renting it really isn't where we want, we wanna own it.
Because my concern is we did this to save money on the hauling fees, which you did the math, it's gonna save us like five hauls and all those. That'll be eaten by the rental fee on the containers.
It's five, it's, the, the rental fee on two containers is five fifty a month.
That's, that's a good portion of what we.
Sixty-six, sixty-six hundred bucks a year.
So it's.
Right, no, I, I understand.
Yeah.
And, and I, I. I'm not, I'm not saying that buying is not the way to go, or the refurbished ones, my guess, here's my guess, the refurbished ones have got new bottoms in them.
Probably.
Just a thought, if that's the problem.
Replated.
Right?
Well, they'd be refurbished.
Yeah, that's probably what the refurbish is, is, is new bottoms.
Yeah.
So.
Because the, the refurbished ones were seventy-five hundred plus delivery, right?
So nine grand.
So that was nine thousand dollars.
Yeah.
No, sixteen thousand five hundred.
Plus delivery.
That, that is delivery.
For both of them?
Yeah.
Fifteen for both delivery.
Those are delivery.
So Casella did. He said, they gave you a price before of around fifteen, I believe, but then he said, he would get us pricing as soon as he had it. It's kind of all over the place because of the threat of tariff.
Yeah, because of, where do you think the steel comes from? Not here.
Well, so. Not yet.
So, right now, I mean, I, what does the board think about keeping the containers that are there for now? But I did wanna just say that Casella commented that we didn't have any containers of our own. We do have documented two containers on our asset list.
And they're both there.
Ellen, yes, Ellen gave me the, the backup for that, we have receipts and stuff, just, just so that everybody is aware, we do have two containers of our own. And now the rest of them belong to Casella. Um, just to.
Yeah.
Stay.
I would hope they would at least give us a price so that we could say yea or nay, but.
I think they, they said they would, and I'll reach back out to them with the other questions, we could continue to rent for now.
Well, I hope we don't have to pay rent until we start using it.
I will ask.
He's been pretty reasonable with, honestly, he's, takes a little while to get information back, but he's been pretty reasonable. So, um, I, Tom, do you have any more questions, or you're good?
No, no, that's, that's, that's pretty much everything I had in my list, so.
I, um.
I was gonna answer that, oh, your question.
For sure. I think we're good with this transfer station thing moving forward, I'll get that stuff from Justin on Monday. Um. I'll get with you, I'll get you a copy of it, and we'll sit down at some point here or whatever and go over it. You know, what pertains to what we're doing, what doesn't, what we need to modify, what we don't.
Yeah, Jamie, you want, you want the copy of the manual?
Yeah, that, that's the creation of, then.
I'll just bring that in.
There's the PM and that stuff.
I'll just bring it in here and run it through, run it through this thing, just get another notebook.
And then we can, we can reach out, we can reach out to Randall for the, um.
Yeah, I'll do that.
Um, maintenance, what, what maintenance looks like from him, I can also.
I'll let him finish.
Um, we can also see if there's private companies that do preventive maintenance, you know, maybe. Joel's Compact or Service or whatever, I don't, you know, maybe there's, maybe there's a private company that we could hire.
I couldn't get a hold of the guy in Latham that, that, they fought that one down, when, uh, Williams Town, wrong. I couldn't get it, but they rebuild and service them down there, I couldn't get a hold of it all.
Yeah, I don't know, but we can certainly look into that, so that we decide what we're gonna do with the maintenance. Okay.
Tom, ready?
Thank you, Tom.
You're quite welcome.
Anybody have any questions for Tom before he leaves?
I have one, Tom, could you, you know the model numbers for that, for those compacters? Okay, when you go over, could you write them down and put it in an email and send it to me?
Boy, I'd be able to.
Okay. Because, because I, no, no, no.
Marley, you probably drive over and get yourself, I live right next to it.
Oh, wait a second, probably, yeah, I won't be there Saturday for garbage, but no, no, I come across, I come across those manuals online.
Yeah, we have it.
Online.
Yes.
She, she got it online. I have it.
I just bought a dump sticker, that was something I thought about maybe at some point addressing, but we won't do that today.
Thanks, Tom.
Thanks, Tom.
Okay, board secretary position discussion, impossible action.
So, we've been twanging around with the idea of hiring someone for board secretary, and we have interviewed Kate Coe. For a couple of the positions that we've had open in the past, and we, um. Were kind of thinking she'd be a great match for that role. Um, however, the board didn't discuss in open session what they want this role to look like as far as, um, pay. And the amount of hours, and I, I don't really think you can say an exact amount of hours, but maybe like.
Certainly you are.
Up to right now, or, or something like that, um, Hannah and I have been brainstorming, we're gonna have to, you know. We're gonna have to get her an email, and we're gonna do. Uh, passwords for like Zoom and the website and things, so she can really just take on that role without having to. Have one of us helping her.
Do you have a job description for this?
We don't, but this is, we'll have to develop that.
Yeah. I wrote out everything that they do for, those like a step-by-step guide for it too.
Yeah. So once you all decide the amount of hours and the pay, then I will put that all into a job description, which I'll bring back to the next regular meeting, just so you know what. Yeah. How we usually do it, and then you all will approve or, or not.
My job description would have to be changed too.
Yeah, I was gonna say, if we could do that, that would be super helpful, at least it would be for me. Um, no, this has been.
When was she, when we were gonna have her start?
I mean, yeah, if I know your job description better and Tara's.
I guess that's either a question for Tara or Mike, when would we think about having her start? July first?
I'd rather her start now, I have.
I'm asking. Start as soon as.
Start ASAP, so that.
I think, I think there's a couple of things, right, first we have to decide if we're going to, um, if we're gonna hire a, a. Add this position, right, that's, that's first and foremost, but before we add the position, we kinda need to know. Exactly what it's gonna be, which we sorta have an idea, so it's going to, correct me if I'm wrong, you know. It's, this, this person is going to be running planning commission meetings. Right, through Zoom and, and doing minute, excuse me, doing minutes, recordings and stuff for planning commission. It's gonna be doing, this person is gonna be doing con-con, right?
Con-con's pretty self-sufficient.
They are, but I, I, yeah, I do think that she should help. She, and she would take on not just the minute part, but posting the agenda, putting it online, putting them on Facebook, all of those pieces.
All of those pieces of those. Now, it's my understanding that Hannah wants to maintain DRB. Or has that changed?
There was, I, either way is fine, I'm fine with doing everything for DRB, or Kyle, I think it was Carl that threw around the idea of me. Sitting at the table with the RV.
Right.
Making more work as like board secretary, I just don't wanna be involved since.
I like that idea, I just.
I prefer that idea a lot more, because I think that, I think that we have the person to fill your spot. And they fill your spot for all of the boards, like, well, except for select board, but all the other boards.
Right.
Then it's simple, the, uh, everything, you know, and then for DRB. Because technically you are the point person, you're the one that's doing all the, you know, you're Mike's assistant.
Exactly.
So.
She has all the answers.
She gets. Yes, she does. Your place should be up here, not sitting back there. If you look at all the other boards, if you look at Bennetton's, if you look at, I believe, they have a rep. Or at least somebody there. On the board.
I like the idea, I, I, and you know, but I didn't want you to be. So I'd, I would rather have you sitting up here with DRB as well, rather than back there running the meeting and trying to weigh in.
And then we also, you know, if I have something to go to, Hannah can then sit here, and Kate could be over there.
Exactly.
Or that way, you know, if one of us gets sick, or we have, you know, I know my son's sixth grade graduation is a Thursday meeting night.
God bless.
I will not be there. So, you know, things like that obviously come up sometimes.
So, so I think, so I think we have a direction, right, you know what that person's gonna be doing, right? So now I think we need to.
Get.
Uh, talk about, uh, you know, entertain a motion to hire a. Um, secretary, a board, uh, and board and commission secretary other than the select board.
I'll make that motion.
That could be.
Any more discussion on that?
So are we gonna get, just one thing, I, like, understand the range of hours per week, so can you all give us a better understanding? So we can nail that down, what that's gonna look like, how long you think it should take, how much time someone should spend in that position.
So can you all give us a better understanding so we can nail that down, what that's gonna look like, how long you think it should take, how much time someone should spend in that position?
So planning's been having one meeting.
They're about to.
Two meetings for planning, one meeting for ConCom, one meeting for Parks and Rec, usually one meeting for DRB. Um, about per month.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, DRB's got, they're gonna end up with, which is kinda rare, but they're gonna end up with, um, like two or three meetings in the next month and a half or so, but that's, that's pretty rare.
Very, so say like five to seven meetings, right, five to seven meetings per month.
Hmm.
The meetings are at least an hour each and then minutes. I don't know how long she said she's really great at typing, but if you give her an hour per meeting for minutes, do you think that's reasonable? I don't know.
I haven't done meetings so long. Meetings are gonna be longer now because they're doing.
So we're talking about maybe forty hours a month? Do you consider everything else she has to do outside of those meetings, roughly?
That would probably be.
Yeah, we.
That would be very, yeah. I doubt it would be that much.
I think it would be enough.
That would be, yeah, more than enough.
Yes.
It shouldn't exceed.
So maybe, so maybe you think, I'm looking at your faces, start at thirty hours a month and with the flexibility to flex an additional ten?
How was it? Twenty?
Okay.
You think twenty's enough? Twenty to thirty?
I mean, it's gonna be a learning curve.
Why don't we try twenty to thirty and see how that works and come back?
And it might not even be close to that. It really depends on the months.
Right.
Depends on what's on the agenda.
Should we put a not exceed level or how you wanna do that?
What are we thinking about for pay? Cause that also helps me kind of figure out hours. Our last board secretary, I think, made around eighteen, but that was years ago. I mean, that was like.
Twenty-two, twenty.
I think.
I thought we were in nineteen or twenty.
I would do, yeah, twenty to, I was thinking twenty to twenty-one.
Thought it was closer. For somebody that twenty-six and they had the.
Twenty.
Time we had somebody help out.
I think that when that person was just the board secretary, it was eighteen and then it went up because her position changed.
And you were still more.
Yes, and when she was.
Yeah, it became more like a board liaison.
So I feel like twenty years.
Twenty, so.
Start them at twenty dollars an hour?
Oh, I don't know. I, I feel like I am thinking about what's gonna be entailed other than meetings as well. I mean, twenty's fine, but I was thinking, I don't know, it's twenty-two more reasonable, I mean.
And we figured for hours.
You have to be careful of other staff's pay.
Yeah.
Because once you go over twenty.
Yeah.
You're already.
Yeah, it's true. Okay, so why don't we say twenty?
I think starting somebody at twenty dollars an hour right now is not an unreasonable thing.
Yeah, right.
And I, I think we have to be very conscious of, um, current employees and staff when it's ready time.
Mm-hmm. That's right.
And we're talking forty hours a month?
I mean, weren't we saying?
Twenty to thirty. Twenty to thirty.
What if we said not to exceed thirty hours a month or no?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
Start with.
Yeah. So I have a motion, I have a second. You add a board secretary, board and commissioned secretary. We'll take that first. We'll take that motion first. Any more discussion on that? All those in favor?
Bye.
Now I'll entertain a motion to, uh, have a pay rate of twenty dollars per hour and the hours not to exceed thirty hours per month.
Can I, can we change that? I think, I don't think we should exceed twenty because honestly, then we start. Well, it's twenty per month. I, okay, no, sorry, ignore me.
We're talking six hundred a month.
I know.
I know what you were thinking.
Yeah.
I just don't wanna, yeah, trigger any other.
I know exactly where you're going, but it's, the other way, the other way's a week.
And then there's all the.
It's a week, not a month on the other stuff, so.
I have a one that gives them five, uh, showers a week. Some weeks they don't have meetings.
Right.
That you could start at twenty and then come back and adjust it if you have thirty.
Yeah, twenty is good.
I want to entertain a motion then to start this person at twenty dollars per hour, uh, twenty hours per month.
I'll make that motion. I second it with a purview of if, uh, we're, if Tara or Hannah sees it, they're getting close, they can come to the board and let us know because of cer- special circumstances of what that was going on. So.
I have a motion, I have a second, we're gonna end them. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Uh.
I'll entertain a motion to hire Kate Cody for this position.
So move. Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Uh. That will listen to Kate.
American flag purchase for foam poles in town. Discussion Impossible Action.
Um, so like we did last year, kind of last minute, we bought some flags. I cannot remember how many, maybe twenty. I bought whatever was in the store.
Yeah.
Um, to match the flags that the fire department and the American Legion put up on the poles. Um, so I jumped on Home Depot to see how many I could get this year. I think I can get fifty, which is like eight hundred and eighty-eight dollars. Um, so I, you know, I could have made that purchases within my purchasing limit. However, I thought it was good to just have the board.
Are we replacing all the ones from last year?
Um, I think what they do is they reuse the ones that are still in good shape and then it, once they get those up, they add to other poles, cause it comes with the mounting hardware and everything.
I want to entertain a motion to purchase fifty flags. I'll make that motion. I have a second.
Second motion.
I have a motion, I have a second. Any more discussion?
You might wanna take a look at the American Legion website, cause they do bulk ordering, so sometimes they can get better pricing.
Um, I, I'll check with the Legion also to make sure that they wanna order on that.
I don't know if it's like a local, but they're national American Legion.
Yep.
Cause that's who we order a lot of our flags.
I know, and they, um, they, all their exemptions too, I think, so.
Yeah, the honor checks is up to know what.
Yeah.
I have a motion, I have a second. All those in favor?
Uh. Spark Grant.
Okay, so I just got a press release that there is an opportunity for us to apply for the Spark Grant again. We were invited to apply because we have applied in the past. Um, it's been used, I believe, for the skate park and maybe the ice skating rink at one point, um, and maybe the garden also. Uh, so the Spark Connecting Community Competitive Grant Program at the Vermont Community Foundation. Sparks supports emerging grassroots projects that nurture community and build social capital. Um, the idea for this grant application would be to, um, possibly get some picnic tables, garbage receptacles and signage for our Clayton Street Park that has kind of been forgotten about. It was gifted to the town years ago, um.
And there's just one trash receptacle down there, right?
Uh, yeah, I, there's not much down there that sort of designates it as a town park. Um, and I think it would get a lot more use if it was advertised as a town park. And the library is right there that has a lot of great resources they can use.
Yeah.
At the river. I know Hurrah really was, um, when we mentioned it to them, they were excited to help us with it and put it on their maps and brochures. Any questions?
I'm from East Powell, so anything down in Powell, I have a vague idea. Where is it?
Okay, so Clayton Park is on Lincoln Street.
Yes.
Which is right on the Hoozick River.
Okay.
So it is town access to the Hoozick River.
Yep.
That we have never utilized. Well, we, we did for a short time, um, but it was, like I said, it was gifted uh, by at least Winchester currently and maybe some others that had it.
Yeah.
But they, um, didn't, you know, the town owning it is tax exempt and some other things, so it was last left in the care of the town. It just kind of has been not, um, updated recently.
Yeah.
I think it's a good idea.
Yeah.
Sydney Clayton actually was one of the ones that donated.
Yes, and it's, um, and it was under the care of Winchester, right?
Yeah, his family.
Yeah, um, and so I know there was a sign, there was a sign, but I think that would be replaced and, um, so.
I love that access to the rivers, a great.
Huge.
Yeah. Idea. I've been.
Really nice fishing area.
Yes, that's, that's the year-round fly fishing.
Yes.
Yes, yeah.
I'll make a motion to put, uh, Tara to proceed with this project.
I will second that motion.
I have a motion, I have a second. We'll, we'll pipe the Spark one. All in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
Uh, public comment. No hands? I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second that motion.
All in favor?